Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2025 Select Ward. The Citri Plating Ward Agenda is posted. East 3rd second. Second. Okay. First up is the continued public hearing with 340 mechanic maintenance site plan in two straight years reveals the one. Monkey Family Village, it's still water permitting in the village section and neighborhood district, Los Sico, the village district, outer village.
Evening. Evening. For the record, Murray Morris, President Engineer, with me is Jamie Keller, architect in the front row, Doug Sheeran, property owner, as well as Steve B. Orklin. Since the last time we met at the planning board, we've been in the board of health, we've received sign off on the septic system approval from the board of health. We also submitted a revised set of site plans, primarily with two revisions. One of them was we took the roof down spout in the back parking lot, which was connected to a catch basin. And we've redirected it to a drain manhole, which is recommendation, Mr. Chesia. Secondly, a portion of the roof, approximately 2,500 square feet in size, was redirected to the back parking lot. Via the gutter system discharging into a pump vault on the side of the building and pumps the water to that back parking lot. We discussed at the last meeting that we're really limited in front of the building and on the sides of the building due to the zoning setbacks, keeping the building up close to the street. And the fact that the topography of the site drains toward the street in order to get the water to the back by gravity is extremely difficult proposition. Hence the need for the pump. But by adding the pump, we achieved the 80% TSS removal, which was what the board had requested at the last meeting. I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
So I'm sure you know what you suggest, if you'd like to see it go.
Sure, so I think the only thing I get really left is I never recommend pumping stormwater. That's not something commonly done in gasolot of the city. Things flat roof. I know it may be a bit more of a challenging design, but there's millions of flat roofs that drain to the to the back. I think that they should look at alternative instead of.
Good.
Karen, may I add something to that? Is there a generator connected to the pump so that when you lose power, you have an issue with it, you know, overflowing or whatever? Are you going to have a generator right there?
Absolutely, and site plan is tall for a generator. It's also required as part of the septic system. So there is a generator on site. As John says, you might not recommend the use of a pump, but there's nothing that prohibits it. It gets us into compliance with the requirement for the 80% TSS removal. It's not commonly done, but it is done in certain applications. Understanding that, you know, each site you're going to be looking at in more situated on a case by case basis. This isn't precedent setting in any way. But on this site here, due to the topography and constraints, we felt it was best to keep the waters outside of the building rather than having pipe penetrations and bringing stormwater into the building through an internal drainage system. That's why we chose the pump fault option.
But it will be connected to the electricity to a generator?
Yes, it will.
That will be correct. That was my concern.
Karen, would you like to welcome your comments? So is the generator an automatic generator? So if power goes out of the generator, it automatically kicks on?
Yes.
I don't recommend, if John doesn't recommend pump system, I don't recommend pump system either. And so that's how I wrote the draft decision that pump system had redesigned. So if the board doesn't agree to that, then you have to, you know, you have to let us know.
Did you evaluate using drainage?
We, we looked at the opportunity to do an internal drainage system. Not that it can't be done, but the cost as well as the intrusion of water into the building was a concern that Jamie had. And coming up with it on the exterior of the building with a pump was the alternative that Mr. Sheeran told us to proceed with. You know, pumps are used for stormwater in the city. Pumps are used traditionally on septic systems all throughout town. Can be done, there's nothing that prohibits.
Root drains you follow them. It go through the buildings.
Yeah, so that's absolutely.
I don't see that as, you know, kind of issues. It seems like it would be better served to make sure you get it, grab, grab your dreams.
Typically, a flat roof building might have its own drains on a parapet style building where we have almost half the roof area is slope roofs already leading to our gutter and downspout system. It's a much more simple approach to simply have a flat roof drain off to the side. It avoids a lot of potential maintenance issues down the road. And a much more complex and expensive internal drainage system. So we always had designed the building that way. With the small amount of additional flow that we're adding to get to the 80%. We just thought changing the entire approach to the design of the building, opening it up to much more potential maintenance and leaking issues. Definitely not the preferred approach from our perspective. I mean, I honestly don't know any flat roof that doesn't leak. So every time you go in Home Depot, look around, huts. It's a common problem. And the more penetrations you have, especially ones that are bringing water in, the worse often it can be, so.
I would just add quickly.
Hundreds and hundreds of buildings have.
Doesn't mean that it's first choice. Like I said, a parapet, a parapet style building that has that style of a design, where the walls are standing up above roof surface as the aesthetic of the building, of course, that's the only option you have. That's not the situation that we have, so. You know, we, we always approach.
I don't see the option. It's usually a grab.
Hopefully the board will remember that we're actually taking the amount of water that we need to, it's just the very front area that we're dealing with here. And so we added this pump system just to take care of that small amount. It's not a whole drainage system for the whole site that's being pumped. It's just a small area that's being pumped. Rest of it all goes by grab.
Ms. Burke? So, Ms. Burke.
I don't believe in John. I mean, I don't think of generator, but I still think that I'm not sure it's the best option. Is she right?
Is it, I'm not familiar with the pump system. Is it very loud? Does it run like only when it's raining and so it's intermittent?
Just, just when it's raining, it would run. It's below ground in a pump vault, you wouldn't hear it at all. And this is just to ensure that we're getting an 80% TSS removal with a weighted average across the site. The water coming off of this roof essentially is clean water already. But this helps get the weighted average across the site or descending to the back. It's already clean water coming off the roof.
Yeah, I think I'm just wrestling with the fact that you're meeting the standard that we asked for, that's the 80% standard. I know it's not recommended, it's maybe not very common to do it, but if it's solving the problem that we sort of get asked about, then it's, you know, it is done, then I don't want to keep issue, especially if it's not been crazy about it at all.
Well, you tell me it's not precedent setting. I've been on this board for five years and I've never heard anybody talk about stop pump in a building ever. I have got some pretty big projects. The two engineers, the one out here, one sitting right next to me, who don't believe that a stop pump.
It's not a stop pump, it's a.
It's a drain.
A drain.
But they're chasing water for water waste to another and don't believe so much else. Where does this get it from?
So this is handling the kind of the mid portion of the roof. And it comes off the side of the building and it pumps it to the back parking lot, to the subsurface chambers that are under the parking lot. Looking at the site plan here, the pump vault is on the side of the building right here, so it's quite a big group runoff area. That pump, it pumps it to the back chamber system. We increased the size of that back chamber specifically and handled that additional roof area.
I'm going to change that stuff like. What's your word? I'm interested in this question. But there we have to, when you need to tell us that it should be done all the way, we made this meeting, I'm going to do that. Richard, you've done this for a lot of years. Let me hear all your ideas if we say yes or no.
We, we have an option that, again, all the project, not, not that any is precedent setting. Projects that have been approved like this, that you guys have done over the recent years, the larger projects, have done the averaging that Greg did, which we met before. It's only what's in the front that's the issue here. And that's never been an issue on another project in the town, this is the first one that came up. So you could waive the pump and just let us have that clean water come down, which is the way we originally designed it. So we, we need to waive it anyways. You can't get 100% of all of the water on the site, which is what your requirement is. But when you average it, we're taking more in the back and a little bit less in the front. But the, the water that we're dealing with now is already clean run from the roof.
It's not a question I asked, I asked, what was your option? What was your, what's your idea of this?
Well, the option is that we could get the waiver. The waiver could include not having a pump chamber.
And having the door cascade and go outside?
No. So it comes off the side of the building, how we previously had designed, it came off the side of the building, went through a particle separator and then ties into Canaan Road. Okay? By doing that, we achieved 77.5% weighted TSS removal across the site. The board asked that, we're never going to achieve 100%. The board asked at the last meeting if we could get that to 80%. The pump gets us from 77.5, it gets us to that 80%. If the board granted the waiver to 77.5 versus 80, you would still have water coming off the roof at that location. It would go through a particle separator and then it would discharge it out to Canaan Road. Even with the pump, once we pumped it to the back parking lot, goes through those chambers, what doesn't infiltrate goes to Canaan Road. It's going through the same discharge point ultimately, either way.
Well, I think you're pumping it to the back. Do the infiltration base, shouldn't be, you know, if you have to.
The infiltration base involves pot during storms with overflow running to Canaan Road.
Well, I thought that was only something larger than, like a 25 years ago. This, this overflows at every spout, right?
Essentially, it has to take an inch. It has to take an inch, so an inch area of the river surface, all that infiltrates. And we mold a little more than that. I'm not sure, I don't know if it, there was small storms out in there.
Yeah, during your small storm, your one year storm, I don't think you have much. But in the two year, 10 and 100, you certainly have water flowing out toward Canaan Road. 1.1 CFS, 2.2 CFS, 4.9 CFS. Those are all less than half of what runs to Canaan Road today without any treatment, without any filters. Which is why the DPW, I think, has submitted correspondence that they were okay with our tie-in. Because we're, we're discharged at less than half of what runs off in its current condition.
Yeah, I guess I don't remember that being the case. You have the calculation. Particularly on 4.9, pretty close, pretty close.
In the pre-development, it's 8.3, we're bringing it down to 4.9.
I didn't see that. Well, John, what do you think in terms of solutions here?
Well, maybe nothing besides.
I mean, I think you can put in internal drainage and maybe cost a little more, but it's not, I've heard of the flat. That's, that's my, so this is just. I mean, I don't ever, I would never recommend pumping stormwater. It would have to be an existing problem, not a new expression.
What about their, what they are proposing in place of a pump? To push through the.
Well, then they, then they would not meet the 80%. So that could be the difference, so.
So it's 2.5%.
So basically, what I had said, the prior ruling was that you're supposed to do the maximum you can. If you had a, have a flat roof and drain it internally, you could get water to the back. And you could get that would be the maximum feasible, in my opinion, plant. You're not going to get the front slope roof to drain back just to prevent it, the drain won't work that way. They got a piece of it to go to the side, the front corner next to the driveway because they have small cells to clear. But they can't get it off. So I'm like, I said, what's the maximum you could get? If you did internally drain the flat portion of the roof to the back.
Okay, so if you have the 2.5, if you have a drain internally, so that brings it to 80%, is that what you're saying?
Well, they could catch the proportion that they proposed to catch and that would give you 80% easily, yes.
Okay. So the pump gives you 80% and in turn drain gives you 8%. And having it go through some type of a filter gives you 77.5%.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I have to say that I think that if you're putting a drain, an internal drain in the building, I have a bit of a problem with that in terms of it could leak. You know, and it could be a problem.
Everything. You know, what I find is that this is done in hundreds of bills, drain leaders and their, and their, you know, gravity drains, they're not even pressurized. I could run all over the things, they burst.
Right, because I asked the board that question.
If the pump stops working, right, even if it's got electricity, we got a problem.
Okay, so that, but that's the problem we're dealing with, right? Pump doesn't work. It's not, it's not a matter, it's not a matter of moving the water.
I think it's also whether it's reliable and you lose power in the pump.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So if the pump doesn't work, we have a problem. Somebody would have to go fix the pump, right, during a rain event. So if we had an overflow from this pump, if the pump didn't work, what would happen is we have roof runoff, which is clean. We could put an overflow into the town drain, which is what we originally started with.
Right, this is why we were trying to eliminate. Why we had.
No, we're not, we're not eliminating that. You're just trying to meet the percentages for the inch runoff. So the only time there could potentially be an issue is if the pump went down. Some of that water would end up going into the town drain. Cleaner than what goes there now, with less water than goes there now. If the pump had a problem.
Again, you're talking about just solving the same problem, different ways.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Patty asked for, what's the alternative? You could put an overflow in, so if something happened to pump and the generator and power and everything, the world stopped, that some of that water would go into the town drain clean, which is fine in any way. But we can take care of all of it while the pump works fine and put it into the system in the back.
So I think the board has to, the board has to decide what, what they want to do. I think, I think going below 80% TSS could be precedent setting because then another engineer is going to say, well, you're letting do it on this project. Why can't, why, why aren't you letting us do it? You know, the setbacks, they picked this particular setback because they wanted a particular size film in. I mean, it says the minimum is 10 feet, the maximum is 30 feet. Then it could have been pushed back a little bit more to allow room for drainage in the front. So I think it, it's a whole trade-off and a whole site development what it all, what it all comes down to in the end. So I think we need to be very careful that because of this first, we do not want it to be precedent setting. It is a very big building. It could have been pushed back, which we had recommended before. And I have to try and get my opinion rest with the two engineers, which is to not use a pump. Anyone else?
No, I, I agree.
Great. Now I think your words are.
I'm not an engineer.
Will you defer to the engineer that has the liability insurance and stamp on the plan?
Yes, so. But again.
There we go.
Now, the answer is, is I wish to all of you this. And so this engineer has designed something for this project. This peer review engineer has reviewed it for the town. This engineer has reviewed, well, future my application because I am not an engineer. And I tend to rely heavily upon with the engineers that I work with. And yes, while I do agree with you, we cannot start setting up our very first project, the law 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 with the S and TSS. That is a very bad precedent setting, sorry, it's just not. I, I, I'm thinking, you know, this is the earth of what we think is going to be a huge project. And I, I think that to argue, give way on something that people think is very miniscule, but really can be very defining. I, I'm not really, we know that you can do 80%. We offer many options. I'm choosing not to use pump because it's rather translucent as far as the person who's just like suggested. Anybody else? Put it off.
So what we'll do is we can move on from that one because it's not going to be decided this evening anyways. And we'll look at that option, so let's go through the rest of the decision.
Well, get to what, okay. Karen, maybe you guys can give us a second. No, so, I mean, so.
We're not free. Go back.
Well, you've got all kinds of other things that are in the suit.
But this one in particular of inch 20, it's still water management, is one that we have not decided.
And could you review some of the findings of fact tonight?
Yeah.
And, I mean, yes, it's written so that, you know, any TSS will be provided when, when there's a change in the, in the design. But could you review some of the findings of fact to make this? Obviously, if they don't, they're going to go back and look at, we're going to have the continuance of the public hearing.
I, I, I don't know of a public hearing, everybody wants a public hearing.
Well, I guess I heard, I heard the East, your Orklin's suggest that there are other issues in the direction here. So rather than read through this whole list of things, now we just, whatever other issues there are. So they all get the rest, come back with a final decision. Unless you think there's nothing in the final fact that is not an issue.
Wouldn't see there are other issues in terms of. And just.
I don't, I mean, I probably, the main issue I had really was the pump, just, you know, the startup, I would agree.
That's the only thing in the findings of fact is the pump thing and, and under number 29 and number 28.
Inch four.
20.
23 and 29. Under the findings of fact, the rest of the findings of fact, I, I believe are fine. I don't believe they had any comments in the comments I received on the rest of the findings of fact. I believe that's true state when you said that. Chairperson, you said 19 inch 42, Los Angeles. What do you want to be in? 19, 23 and 29.
Page of?
Uh, 17.
Okay, got it.
You know, so I, I think we could go through some of those findings of fact or what, what are the other issues that you have? I mean, to me, that, that was the biggest issue.
There's, well, a number of issues. I think the last time that we were in, we discussed that Mr. Sharon would like to be able to either own and rent the two affordable units as affordable units or have the option to be able to sell them as affordable units. And I think the way the condition is written in here, I don't, I don't understand exactly how it's written because it says you can't rent and or sell, I forget right where that condition is, but that was one of the ones we chatted about before.
Is that number 14?
Your condition is.
Two affordable housing units in London 25, where you're going to do this required for the project. That was the copy, well, pretty strict. No, affordability of the conditions is as, condition 44, page 26. That's where affordability starts. Project 60.
What part of that is?
What part of, what is it?
That was written. Nothing makes sense or, or conflicts with your outcome.
That's the problem, that's, that's the right here.
Okay.
It's at the end of one of them that says you can't do both.
Oh, you can't do both, it's either all rental or a condo. We don't make a match.
They're all, every one of them is going to be a condo. All these units will be condominiums. Doug is choosing to retain a number of these units. So if he retains the affordable units and puts them in the rental program, he just wants the option in the future, if he wants to sell one of those units, he can sell it as an affordable unit. That's, that's, we talked about before, that's all he's looking to do. I don't know if it's written that way to allow that. Still can't find the right condition.
Probably 95 or 96. Well, have you talked to Metro West?
I tried to get Metro West and I didn't, but if it's up to Metro West, that's fine. If the board will do it in accordance with Metro West. So as long as it meets the program, that's okay. But the condition doesn't say subject to the approval of Metro West. It said that, we'd be fine with that. If you can't do it under the program, that's one thing, but not allow it under the decision is something different.
I don't even see where it says that.
Is it 96?
I don't think it's 96.
Right, here's the thing, they're all going to be condos, okay? And whether it's Mr. Sharon or whether it's John Smith, has two of those condominiums that are the boarding units, okay, that they own, that John Smith owns. And he rents out three bedrooms as affordable and rents out the one bedroom as affordable. They always have to be affordable. And then somewhere down the road, Mr. Smith decides he's going to go to Florida. And so he sells his condos and they have to stay as in perpetuity. So what's the problem?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see what it is.
I see a problem, well, there is no issue here.
Well, it's.
Because the, yeah, the HOA documents define when you do that.
Page, page 16.
What, what, what is it?
Page 16, it's the top paragraph. Page 15, item number five. I think it's the one that you're looking for. The age, definitely, number five, last sentence.
What it is, is page, yeah, page 16, it's on page 16, top paragraph. A mix of the two shall not occur.
Unused construction shall be rental or ownership, the ownership currently anticipated. A mix of the two shall not occur. So what that means is either they're all owned or they're all rented. If you own it and your HOA doc says that you can rent it, that is within your HOA documents.
Right, answers the question.
That answers the question.
Answers the question.
But they still have to remain.
But they have to remain, right.
But they can be sold.
Yes.
Yes.
They just have to be affordable units.
Yeah.
So, so a person that is not a renter, but a person who wants to buy the affordable unit and they qualify for an affordable unit to purchase it, this will allow them to do it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not the way I read it.
No, that's the way we.
That, that, that's what he's looking for.
Yeah, so.
As long as he has the understanding, that's fine.
So you have to know, it's a, they're gonna be all ordered, right? When they're gonna be qualified, so you gotta own it. So in your HOA doc, someone's getting their attention that you own it. But you have to own it as an affordable unit.
Okay.
Wait.
I'm so sorry. I can be a little bit different. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, correct. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a question. Have you qualified to own it?
Well, that's.
I made too much fun.
And that's why I should have asked him that.
I think that might be a question.
So my main concern is not the affordable, it's just the, I think you let you get. An owner, and that being you just answered the question, if it's in the condo docs. You can rent it. Affordable, if it's not allowed.
Well, have you said you might not be qualified?
Affordable is not my, affordable is not my issue here. It's the other condos. If they, if they're allowed to be rented and it's in the condo docs, you answered my question, we can move on from this.
But they have to be, they'd be bought by somebody.
Correct.
Qualifies as an affordable.
That's.
Or rented, or rented to somebody who qualifies. It's gonna wait for.
It has to be affordable all the way around.
I answered the question, let's move on.
All right, so when you resubmit the condo docs.
Yes.
Cause they have to be resubmitted and re, because our, we don't really have, read it real comments. Then you make sure your attorney gets it the way that you want, and then I can explain that to my attorney.
I understand.
But that's, that's all that bullshit.
But I'd suggest to implement for us people to comment on.
Yeah, of course.
And, and, and I try.
You know, maybe I have a different take.
Yeah, but that's.
I deal with.
What else do you have to see?
Uh, I have to get the condition number. It says a condition that talks about having a walkway in front of the building. And it says it has to go all the way across the front. It has to have vertical granite curbing. It'd be great if it said we don't have to put it across the entryway. Because it says we have to put it right across the frontage. So it's great if we can have it everywhere where we don't have an entrance. It's hard to get across the.
What condition number?
I can't, it just said.
Can't, we have.
No, I can't.
You know, for the record, could you just all be clear? And when you begin to identify an issue, be clear with page number and number.
Is it page nineteen, number twenty-six? Granite curb should be installed along the whole length of both entrance curves, is that what it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, that's what it says.
That's what it says. We'd like to not put it across the entrance of the roadway.
It's both entrance curves. The curve is not, the curve is the curve. It's not that. I think you're giving too much into this, but it goes along the sidewalk, not across the driveway. Is that what you're asking me?
I think it's the frontage, isn't it?
Well, sometimes we have to use a little common sense.
Says that along the whole line, most entrance curves, so it's.
Right.
It's the entrance coming in, it's not going across.
Not going across the driveway. It's going around the sidewalk.
Uh, I'm sorry.
No, no, stop.
Okay. Next. Why? You don't know what your question was, Mr. Sharon. So, yes?
Get over it. Who wants to? All right, again, some, some of the stuff that I've got in here is minor stuff, whether it's a typo or something like that, which which would make sense to just meet with Karen.
I don't want, I don't want.
Yeah, well, you got, wait, wait, here. Well, well, we're.
What are the open?
Just, you got maybe issues that we won't talk about.
I'm sorry, you guys, yeah, a lot of this just fall through this stuff, Karen.
Do you want me to read findings of fact?
We want to get the findings of fact. We have, we have a public hearing at seven fifty. So we have to decide if you're gonna do this or not do this.
Well, item number nineteen of the findings of fact. Is this issue of, of explaining why. But to the extent we don't have enough of it all, we can't, we get the term.
Right, yeah, so. So what I want to do is, no, so we do a continuance.
No, not yet, not yet.
We will do it in turn event. We're not gonna mess with this. They don't agree with it. We're not gonna go back and forth another meeting. This nonsense, we're gonna do internal.
Can I have you guys go to page twenty-five? If you read the second sentence in issue sixty-five.
Issue sixty. The walkway shall extend along the entire frontage of the property in the five. Five point five feet wide, immediate compliant concrete walkway with vertical granite curbing with a paved across block. Across Gitter Road, so much others who can watch it through village area. That's the second sentence. I'll come back to you later.
With vertical granite curbing.
Um, I'm just.
That's, that's the one, that's the one that I highlighted. It wasn't on page nineteen. It was that one right there.
Page forty-five.
Across the entire frontage.
The walkway, it's talking about the walkway, shall extend along the entire frontage of the property.
With vertical granite curbing.
Yeah.
Right.
With the paved across block across Gitter Road.
Yep, that's the one that's going over towards the store. So this is calling for vertical granite curbing one hundred percent across our frontage. Is that what it says?
Everywhere where there's a sidewalk, it's gonna be vertical granite curve.
The walkway shall extend along the entire frontage of the property.
Yes.
Okay, with vertical granite curbing.
Except where there's a driveway.
Where does it say that?
I'll add it.
Perfect.
You know, why couldn't you have given me these comments prior to the meeting?
Sometimes we just use that common sense, but what else do we have here?
This is a condition spawned on record to registry of deeds, and all I'm trying to do is to make it as clear as we can make it. That's all I'm trying to do. Says the entire length, and all I'm asking you is take out where there's gonna be an entrance to the road, no vertical granite curve. That's fine. I'm arguing about it, just pointing it out.
Anything else?
I, again, a lot of smaller stuff. Talks about homeowners association, it's gonna be a condominium association. There's, there are other spots, again, she and I can go through and, and correct that stuff.
So we're looking for a contingency.
For what?
This, this.
But I'm giving you, you want internal grants that hold it up?
And everything else that Mr. Yoboy has.
Get what he said.
Get what he's.
All right, well, she can make those changes. That's, that's the thing. Those are, those are minor changes. The drainage and the affordability were the two main issues.
So you don't want a contingency, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, if we're gonna beat everything, then we'll put.
Well, anything we're gonna change, you vote, right?
Yeah, so we can't do that.
So we're not gonna change that.
Yeah, they have their part of us.
If, if language.
Yes.
Were available.
I think Karen.
Long as we're all in page.
We're agreeing to what Karen had written.
But we don't have that stuff.
Oh.
So what we agree to is what's on the paper, and then that goes to public record. And what you're asking for is not on the paper, it goes, so we need to correct that.
Yes, we're just trying to find the facts.
We don't have that.
Okay, yeah, sure, he's a candidate. The question is, you know.
But I, I think that.
We've got twenty minutes and we've got a hundred, you know.
I think we could do some of the findings of fact. I mean, I think some of the findings of fact clearly are not for you to change.
Okay.
I mean, the schedule is very broad. I mean, next time we have a public, uh, public meeting.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I personally don't need to read their findings of fact, but, um. You know, we just need to make sure we've got the laws written the way they should be written.
Oh, and I think, I think they're written the way they should be written and modified to say when the roof change system has changed.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the findings of fact are what we've decided to do for reading is, is we're not gonna, when we get to the site plan approval standard, we're not gonna read what the standard is, we're just gonna read what the finding is. So that'll take, that'll take some time out of it. Um, but, you know, we could at least get through the findings of fact, I think, tonight.
Okay, all right. Are we ready?
Yeah, ready.
This has to do with a major site plan review, stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district VCM at three forty Gannett Road. I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the applicant Douglas Sharon and owner D E S Properties LLC filed an application for a major site plan review and stormwater permit for multi-family building project in the village center. Neighborhood district under Cituit zoning bylaw section five eighty-seven fifty-seven sixty. Neighborhood district under Cituit wiring, look at that, and seven seventy thousand. The applicant, application included, but is not limited to the following. A, cover letter, D, application form security attachment A through F, and stormwater permit four. B, counties and butter list. C, site plan three forty Gannett Road assessors parcels thirteen dash two dash forty-one. Cituit mask dated ten nine twenty twenty-four by Morse Engineering Consulting LLC consisting of eleven sheets. The site plan sheets L dash one and D dash one, entire three forty Gannett Road. Cituit mask, N C department submission set dated ten four twenty twenty-four by Hawk Design Inc. E, architectural plans, multi-family buildings, three forty Gannett Road, fit mask by Maxim Architects. Date ten ten twenty-four, consisting of sheets. A one oh one through one oh five, round floor, first floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, and roof lands. A two oh one through two oh three, consisting of building elevations and setback sections. F, stormwater report and calculations, proposed multi-family building, three forty Gannett Road, assessors map thirteen dash two dash forty-one, Cituit mask dated October eleventh twenty twenty-four by Morse Engineering Company Inc. G, construction and post-construction operation and maintenance plan, three forty Gannett Road, assessors map thirteen dash two dash forty-one, Cituit mask dated October three twenty twenty-four by Morse Engineering Company Inc. H, lighting plan sheet one dash one, three forty Gannett Road, Cituit mask dated ten three twenty twenty-four by L S I of Cincinnati, Ohio. To the property that is the subject of the application is composed of one parcel. Parcel is bought thirteen dash two dash forty-one and is seventy-three thousand, one hundred eighty-one square feet, all of which is upland. The parcel has frontage on and access off Gannett Road, a pathway. The property is currently improving with a hair salon building, a warehouse building, a small building, and a chaise. Three, the project is located in the village center and neighborhood. VCM zoning district, North Cituit Village, N S V, outer village, sub-district O V. V C N, N S V, O V. For the zoning bylaw, in effect for this property is in the bylaw approved by Cituit and in town meeting on four eight twenty twenty-four and the attorney general on seven ten twenty twenty-four, posted to the website July twenty twenty-four. Five, the project posed by the applicant consists of twenty-five residential units in one multi-family building. Multi-family building will have a total of thirty-nine bedrooms. It will be two affordable units, which is ten percent of the total number of units, wrap it down. Six, M F B is four stories in the front and is thirty-five feet eight inches tall to the roof midpoint. The M F B is three stories in the rear and twenty-four feet eight inches to the roof midpoint. The height of the building from the average grade is thirty-one feet seven inches to the roof midpoint. The overall height is thirty-eight feet seven inches from the average grade, which is less than a maximum height of forty feet as defined in the subtle bylaw. Seven, there are thirty-seven total exterior parking spaces provided. This includes two handicap parking spaces on the north rear side of the building. There are three electrical vehicle parking spaces on the north side rear of the building. Parking is governed by section seven sixty point eight, Cituit, selling bylaw parking in mixed use districts. Take two, and requires one space for one bedroom unit, one point five spaces for a two-bedroom unit, and two spaces for a three-bedroom unit in a multi-family, a mixed use building, as the site is in the V C N district. Five spaces are provided for the nineteen seventy-five hundred square foot community room, which is one space for three hundred ninety-five square feet. Eighty, section seven sixty point seven is not applied because post use is residential in the V C N. Now, the property at three forty Gannett Road is not required of pedestrian touch, open lay zone for section five eighty point two of the zone by law. Sixteen, in the V C N, N S V, O V, a multi-family building is allowed use by right for section four twenty of zoning by law and allowed building type per section five eighty point three. Which is seven fifty of the zone by law. Eleven, the base residential density in the V C N, N S V, O V, sub-district for section five eighty point four of the zone by law for multi-family building is fifteen units per acre by right and twenty-four units per acre by special permit. The proposed project is twenty-five point two units, rounded to twenty-five, that are allowed by right and up to forty units are allowed by special permit. Twenty-five units are proposed on a site which is not required of density bonus, but is allowed by right. Twelve, section five eighty also has minimum bulk standards for the dwelling sizes. Two plus bedroom units are required to have nine hundred square feet of usable floor, floor area. A one-bedroom unit is required to have six hundred square feet of usable area. The project has proposed one bedroom units, usable area of eight hundred ninety square feet minimum. It proposed two bedroom units, usable area of nine hundred square feet minimum. And the proposed three bedroom units, usable area of nine hundred square feet minimum, of all which meet the bulk standard. Thirteen, no common ground standards are required for this project because no new streets act. Major aid, pedestrian parks block is required by zoning and is provided. Fourteen, two affordable housing units of minus twenty-five residential units are required in the project. The affordable units are distributed throughout the proposed building and project. The two affordable units are as follows. One bedroom unit on the second floor and a three bedroom, excuse me, on the second floor and a three bedroom unit on the third floor. All of the affordable units are designed so that the exterior was indistinguishable from the variety of units. Advocate has stated they would be using Metro West collaborative development as a monitoring agent for the affordable units. No other information has been submitted for the affordable units at this time. The applicant requests a waiver to allow the remaining information to be submitted after the project is approved. The affordable units must be able to count to the town's district subsidized housing authority and comply with the local initiative program, LIP, seven sixty point C M R fifty-six. Fifteen, the applicant is referred to meet, was referred to meet with the design review committee, D R C, and subsequent members of D R C on several occasions to discuss this project. The D R C recommended that the planning board move ahead with the special permit process in a recommendation memorandum to the planning board dated March five, twenty twenty-five, with a recommendation to the design reason criteria, central, so, in section seven fifty of the design bylaws. Zone by law with the exception of the building step back slash step back and building with which will require a waiver. The D R C felt the waivers are minor and tells the overall design of the building. They thought the step back, step back in non-conformance is minimal. And the building has been set back as far back on the site as possible with restraints of parking, stormwater, etc. The roof and the non-conformance is a combination of slope proof and dormers, and it is minimal in relationship to the facade. The proposed project project proposes cedar flatwood siding. Trim will include some PVC materials in historic historical accurate trimming detail, a forty-year asphalt shingle roof rubber on a flat area, and the cannibals will be on the roof, but not visible from Gannett Road. The D R C requests a meeting for approval of materials, color, and exterior design details prior to the building permit. The D R C requests a meeting for approval of materials, color, and exterior design details prior to the building permit being issued. Sixteen, an M F B as is proposed, as the proposed project includes lot standards and design standards found in seven fifty point six, including a minimum lot size is not required. Street frontage of eight feet is required. The project has a hundred fifty sixty five point eight six feet frontage of Gannett Road. Lot depth is not required. The front yard built to zone seven zero feet for all the new types. The project is twelve point eight feet setback for Gannett Road. Minimum side yard is zero feet if the common wall that adjacent building exists, which this project does not, thus fifteen feet. The project has provided approximately sixty seven point four inch, sixty seven feet point four inches to the west and fifteen point one inches to the east. Minimum rear yard is twenty feet. The project is provided three hundred twenty four feet four inches. Outdoor identity space coverage required is fifteen percent of the lot. The project has provided thirty two point four percent of twenty three thousand six hundred eighty nine square feet of private open space in the form of common yard and garden for the plans as follows. One, there is a common yard and garden three thousand eight hundred forty one square feet in identity space number one on the west side of the building. Two, there is a common yard and garden of nineteen thousand eight hundred forty eight square feet to the rear of the building where the septic system will be located. The outdoor identity space provided is in importance under requirements of section seven two of Cituwe zoning by law in section five eighty point nine B or two B. One is a common yard and garden. The building high conforms to the height regulations set forth for multi-family building in zoning by law as the average height is thirty eight feet seven inches to the top of the building from the average grade, which is less than forty feet as defined in Cituwe zoning by law. A required minimum street facing wall width for a multi-family building is sixty feet and the maximum width is a hundred feet under section seven fifty point five B. Two D, vertical modulation and articulation. No street facing building elevation can be wider than one hundred feet without a special permit. The building is eighty four feet meeting requirement. A street facing entrance is required in the step by law. A maximum building footprint allowed is not applicable in the V C N, N S V, O B. Seventeen, a multi-family building has generally designs standards found in section seven fifty four five, including more than one principal building is allowed on a lot. Building one dimensional standards are met for each principal building individually. Project is one building on a lot, which meets the required dimensions. The project's principal building and accessory structure are located outside of any required front side of this index except as otherwise permitted. The build to zone occupancy is measured as a percentage of the width of the street frontage. The primary building to zone occupancy shall be no less than fifty percent of the frontage width. The post building, uh, post building of the project is less than fifty percent of the frontage width at approximately forty two point eight percent of waiver is requested. The project's lot is not a full lot. Multi-family buildings total of twenty five B are required to be set back or stepped back from the street right of way. The proposed building is set back twelve point eight feet from the Gannett Road part property line. The building set back twelve point five, thirty seven point five feet. A maximum height of thirty feet is allowed. According to the applicant's architect, the average building height point twelve point five feet and thirty seven point five feet would be twenty point five tall. The average height means thirty feet height, means thirty feet height and thirty seven requirement. However, a portion of the building in this section total three thousand nine hundred twenty one square feet or one point one percent of the building volume exceeds the thirty foot height. Limitation then therefore requires a waiver from the step backs requirement. The scale of the project is visually compatible with the site that is likely to be with its name for this true. This is the first redevelopment project one in this, one in this section, in this section of North Cituwe under the V C N. The zoning by law building articulation standards have been met by the project with the building that is greater than fifty feet in width designed to be as a series of smaller buildings with varied articulation. Horizontal modulation and articulation are required as the products, project's building is three stories and taller. The fronts of the buildings are visually articulated over three and four stories with overhangs and prominent forces. The rear of the building is visually articulated over three and four stories overhangs and forces. Street facing buildings and facades are required to provide surface relief to dormers and door cannibies. The project has provided door cannibies and dormers. Facade transparency is required with multi-family buildings facing a street right of way line. Windows shall be evenly spaced along the facade. Windows shall be low reflective, reflectivity glass and the facade blazing shall fall between the height of two feet and twelve feet. Facade blazing requirements are only applicable to front facades facing a street right of way. The building meets the requirements with window spacing, facade blazing occurring on the first floor between two to twelve feet and local ones. The project roof pitches for the building are twelve twelve with the dormers at eight twelve, twelve twelve or seven twelve. This meets the requirements for game of move and six to twelve minimum and twelve to twelve maximum. The project meets the required roof pitches. Exterior treatments are provided for the project. Exterior treatments will be cedar platform siding with trim of cedar or P C, or PVC and historical accurate trimming details. The exterior colors will be determined prior to building permit being issued at the meeting of the D R C. The slope roof will be a dark colored forty year shingles, architectural asphalt shingles. The flat roof will be a rubber then there. Gutters and downspokes will be present. The windows will be affordable and will be Anderson one hundred series composite or approved of building. Architectural elements are continued from the front to the sides of the building. The proposed building has textures and patterns. Project is visually compatible with surrounding buildings and exterior treatments provide parage of the project's synthetic materials. Proportional architectural elements are provided and continue around the size of the project including the street. Eighteen, development site standards section seven fifty four A are met, including the project site consists of one proposed building. The project site is not included in any existing proposed right of way. The project's multi-family building is a permitted building type in this district. A minimum of fifty feet of frontage on a public, a public, accessible street providing access to the development is provided. Development block standards are not applicable. Site landscaping is provided by the project and the plantings are arranged so as not to obscure the vision of the system for traffic. Parking must be located a minimum of five feet behind the front facade of the primary building. Project needs to find it. A street screen is required with parking is visible from a public street or sidewalk. A landscape screening or fencing is provided to screen parking from Gannett Road. A driveway servicing the site is provided off Gannett Road and is twenty four feet wide. New public utilities will be provided to underground utilities. An outside trash storage area is provided with dumpster, inside vest, and clothes on the yard size. A loading area is provided. Bicycle racks have been provided at a minimum required rate of ten percent of the total automobile spaces. Four bicycle rack spaces are required and six spaces are provided. Now team.
We can skip it for now. I think it's applicable as written right now, but you know, if we can skip it for, for next time.
Twenty, a landscape plan is required to all submissions except where waived by the planning board, which plans should to the greatest plot, as greatest extent possible, utilize native plants. No plants listed as invasive or provocative by Massachusetts shall be used and existing invasive plants shall be removed. A project landscape plan has been provided in which some native plantings are proposed. Moreover, the lawn area and front yards minimized and fertilizer uses discouraged and screening of the parking area with the front has been provided is required and is been met. Twenty one, front yards shall not include incurious surfaces that were driveway, walkways, or paved outdoor dining area, which shall consist of no more than twenty five percent of the front yard. If it's one driveway and a wall, front yard, which the applicant indicates constitutes nine hundred eighty two square feet of the curbage area of the four thousand one hundred seventy six square feet front yard, thirty foot center, thus being curbs in the front yard is twenty three point five. Twenty two, parking design standards also must include access for parking lots to a public sidewalk and to the primary building as stated in section seven sixty point eight F two. The project has provided a sidewalk connection for the parking in the rear to the proposed sidewalk in front of the building. The proposed sidewalk will extend along the full length of the frontage as required as currently proposed. Twenty three, section seven sixty parking, parking is provided toward the zone by law. Advocate indicates thirty seven spaces are required and provided. Parking includes six spaces for three, three bedroom units at two spaces per unit. Twelve spaces for eight, two bedroom units and one and a half spaces per unit, at one and a half spaces per unit. Fourteen spaces, fourteen one bedroom units, one space per unit. Two handicap spaces are provided along three electrical vehicle charging spaces for the project. Five spaces are provided for the one thousand nine hundred seventy five square feet community room, which is only for the use of the residency building. Twenty four, a transportation impact assessment for proposed residential development three forty Gannett Road, Cituwe mass was prepared by Van Ness and Associates Inc., V A I, dated November point one four. In response to that, the planning board's peer review traffic engineer, T and Vaughn, provided a peer review of traffic engineer comments. V A I provided a response to the engineering comments. All peer review comments have been addressed. Twenty five, Cituwe zoning by law section seven sixty, seven seventy point six sets forth the standard of review for a pool of proposed site plans that are required from the coast developments, which are oversized that may have significant impact on neighborhoods. Multi-family buildings require a site plan reviewed by the planning board. In reviewing application, the planning board is required to ensure to a degree consistent in the reasonable use of the site for the purposes permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located, all of the following. Section seven seventy point six A, site plan approval standard A. The check of the planning, um, the site is finding, the site is previously developed, previously developed property including a formal hair salon, a warehouse building. The proposed redevelopment will modify the site with a lot of uses in importance with the zone by law. The building has been designed for hands and system makeup, aesthetics, adornment, and feature found by boarded by residential areas. The western water line is commercial uses. Sub, southern water line is bonded by Gannett Road and commercial establishments across the street. Retaining walls, private fence, and swimming water around the jar of the site. The adjourning premises are protected from detrimental indoor effects impacts all of the government. The site has been designed with respect to landscape, lighting, stormwater, septic, and trash to mitigate impacts to the building properties and does not propose any detrimental or offensive methods of use. The standard is met. Twenty six, section seven sixty point six B, site plan approval standard B. Finding. The proposed project is located at Gannett Road. The proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking meeting requirements of seven fifty point eight and seven sixty. Access to the site will be provided with modified curb cuts into the site of Gannett Road. The applicant has demonstrated that there is capacity on Gannett Road to handle the traffic while changing the site from a hair salon and warehouse to a multi-family building. Any queue of traffic leading the site will be contained on site. A traffic impact assessment examined, vehicle and pedestrian safety, site distance advocacy, expected impacts on the traffic flow, and franchise analysis. And there is no expected impact of the vice signalized section under the twenty thirty one buildings conditions. The standard is met. Section seven seventy point six point C, site plan approval standard C. Finding, the proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking meeting of requirements in section seven fifty point eight and seven sixty. Access will lead from a modified curb cut onto Gannett Road. The access of Gannett Road is twenty four feet wide. There is an internal site walkway to reach a proposed walkway across a portion of the front and walk, proposed crosswalk across Gannett Road. There is no form of pedestrian sidewalk on Gannett Road from the site until after McBride Station West driveway. A loading site is provided to facilitate small delivery vehicles to moving, to moving vehicles with a ramp to provide ease of loading and unloading. The applicant has demonstrated the site will have sufficient access of service and emergency vehicles. Headlight glare should not be an issue as there are walls, fencing, and screening to the adjacent property. Cut-off light fixtures will be used to minimize light glare. The standard is met. Section seven seventy point six D, this is number twenty eight. Uh, site plan approval standard D, the project proposes to use an onsite septic system designed in compliance with Tyler Vod, that won't have an empty pipe possibly connected to sewer in the future. The project proposes an onsite water connection Gannett Road, water study bonded by Western and San Antonio indicate it was water capacity in the public water systems and that the individual connections must meet D P W requirements. All units will individually meet it for water. The building will have fire sprinklers to provide protection. The existing hydrant in front of three forty Gannett Road will need to be replaced with a new hydrant. Flow testing indicating the water supply has added the volume and pressure to support the proposed building. There is a proposed hydrant in the island prior in the island to the rear of the building in the northwest corner. There is fenced industrial area, areas of trash, which will be emptied on a weekly basis or more frequently as necessary to the rear of the building in the western corner of the identity space. This standard is met. Twenty nine.
I'll just skip twenty nine.
Okay. And now we get to the rules thirty. Section seventy seven, seven seventy point six F, site plan approval standard F, finding. The site is not within the water resource protection district. There are no toxic or hazardous materials proposed to be stored on site and no oil storage or discharge, discharges are accepted. This standard is that. Section thirty one, section seven seven point six G, site plan approval standard G, finding. The proposed project disturbs approximately seventy thousand square feet of a seventy three thousand one hundred eighty one square foot site. The site is on an incline, so great changes are proposed. There will be anywhere from one to four feet of fill necessary to construct the project as rated to provide separation to groundwater. The applicant indicates cotton fill had been minimized to the extent practical given the topology of the site by using caving walls and an innovative septic leaching field that requires less fill than a conventional system. There will need to be, also the stripping and various structural fills will need to be brought in to accomplish the great changes. Minimal existing vegetation is proposed to remain on site. Minimal existing vegetation is proposed to remain onsite and only at the edges of the site. Construction phase and post-construction phase best management practices will be called to minimize soil erosion. This standard is met. Section seven thirty-two, section seven seventy point six point H, site plan approval standard H, finding, the site does not consist of any singing fuse from publicly accessible locations. North city is heavily, is a heavily developed area. The project applies with this requirement. Okay. Thirty-three, section seven seventy point six point I, site plan approval standard I, finding, the project has one driveway off Gannett, off Gannett Road designed to service the multi-family building. Thirty-seven parking spaces are provided. Parking areas are screened with vegetation and fences and is shielded from the public right-of-way fire, meaning behind the proposed building. The dumpster is screened by fencing. Shade trees meet minimum size requirements are proposed adjacent to the parking area. Fencing provided is six feet to provide screening. Exterior lighting has been arranged to dark sky compliant and does not spill over abiding properties, thereby minimizing glare meeting the requirements of by law. This standard is met. Thirty-four, section seven seventy on six J, site plan approval J, the site itself has safe, functional, and convenient pedestrian access, installation sidewalks, and an ADA accessible route internal to the site. There is a sidewalk proposed along the frontage along Gannett Road with a proposed crosswalk at the side of the road. There is no complete sidewalk along the project side of Gannett Road until after defined driveway. One light grab location is at the rear of the building. The standard is met. Based on these findings, the planning board provides a stormwater permit, site plan review for the village, center, and neighborhood district, meets the requirements of the village center and neighborhood districts sections five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, and seven seventy, or can be conditioned as the project will be in harmony, the general purposes of the bylaw, meets the requirements of Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, with the exception of what numbers do we not do?
Nineteen.
Nineteen and, and, and.
Twenty-one.
And twenty-nine. Okay. Is your second amendment due? The session?
Well, this question is, we can't make a decision.
No, we're not doing the decision. We're not doing the condition decision. But you have to approve to, you have to move, you move, you have to vote on the findings of that.
Oh, we skipped to find.
Right, so, so that's why she said it, except for nineteen and twenty-nine. It will go back.
So we're gonna come back and do another finding.
You're gonna come back to do those two next time.
Just as a point of order here, I would just, we know what to do, right?
You know what you want to do, yeah.
That's what I would say, is that why don't we just address nineteen and twenty-nine?
Next time.
What that thing might have.
We're, you know, we already, we're already a half hour behind. And we have two, we have two other things.
It's kind of mean.
No, I know, but, I mean, it's not gonna be complete tonight because it's really not fair to everybody else.
Second.
Second amendment. On paper, I'm, you should be open to report your notes. If we have any more issues like that, we see the telegraphing put in.
Absolutely.
If you're confused about the language, you have to.
So, next time, we have here forty-four at seven thirty, which I would allow an hour for. And on June twelfth, we have things going up till eight thirty. So we could either go eight thirty, May twenty-second, or eight thirty, June twelfth. Much pleasure, gentlemen.
You.
I mean, I guess at this point, huh?
Do this for twenty seconds. They've done, they've done, they've done.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion group?
Yeah, move to continue the public hearings three forty Gannett Road until, it's May twenty-second, two oh twenty-five and ten the time for action filing with the town clerk until June fifteenth.
So moved.
Et cetera.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, so you made point seven. Keep my recommendation to you to that again. Move right along. I think I have to clear. I, I. What are your asks? It's on me. I'm fixing it. I don't think it's gonna be possible. Okay. Second.
I'll bet. It's just, I don't know how they extend. But, uh, okay. That's it, what?
I'm sorry. Okay. I mean. Any? Can, can you hear me a little more? You have air on, I was scared, you know? Get to me, I'm just getting them. I mean, I've seen your whole boot.
I have it.
Yeah, we got it.
In accordance with the town's city stormwater regulations, approved four twenty-nine, Gannett and I.
They're starting a public hearing.
The constituent general bylaw section three two oh five oh stormwater, the planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen, sorry, early, in the Slidworth hearing room at City Hall. Subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant Gregory Crone for a stormwater permit, property located at Sierra Country Way, assesses map block twelve dash three dash nine B, has over forty thousand square feet of land, is proposed to be disturbed or altered by a new single family home and driveway. The property is owned by Gregory Crone and is located between seven twenty-three and seven forty-seven Country Way. Plans are available for review at the planning board office, et cetera.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the property owner, Greg Crone. As was just read into the record, this is a stormwater permit for a new single family home, Mr. Crone's address. The lot currently is vacant, is located in between seven twenty-three and seven forty-seven Country Way. This stormwater permit is a little bit different than a lot of the ones that get issued by the town, in the fact that we're disturbing over an acre of land. At the forty thousand square foot area, that triggers a public hearing versus anything under forty thousand is administratively reviewed. This proposal, the existing site is fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet in size, its entire upland landing area. It was previously cleared, maybe two years ago, it was forested, the trees have been cut down. But there are no structures on the property, there is gravel, dirt, driveway that crosses the lot. What we've done is we've encapsulated all that cleared area, which is approximately forty-eight thousand square feet of that fifty-two thousand square foot lot with that age. The proposal is to construct a new five-bedroom, single-family home. It would have a crushed stone driveway from Country Way, which is on the left-hand side of the plan, up to the home, the home is at the back of the lot, so the home shaded there. All of the disturbed areas outside of the home and outside of the driveway would be mown and seeded post-construction. Stormwater-wise, what we've done is we've taken the entire roof area and directed it to subsurface recharge chambers located in the front yard. The yard areas and the driveway areas, we've designated and we've shown grading to two stormwater systems, one a rain garden in the front yard, which would be implanted rain garden, and then secondly, down by Country Way at the entrance of the site, would be a grass infiltration depression. We've submitted stormwater calculations for the two, the ten, twenty-five, and hundred year storm events, showing that rates and volumes runoff are mitigated for all of the storm events, including operation maintenance plans for the stormwater BMPs. Erosion control, we've proposed at the limit of work, a mulch sock on the down gradient limit of work and a silk fence on the up gradient limit of works, just to serve as a, as the limit of work, limit of disturbance. We have a stabilized construction entrance proposed at Country Way, which would be your standard crushed stone stabilized construction entrance. We've designated soil stockpile areas on the plan and pre-protection fencing around the few trees that remain on site that are to further remain when their project is done. The town had hired Merrill Engineers to do a peer review of this project. We submitted revised, we've received his response to Merrill's peer review, and I believe we've addressed all outstanding comments. Merrill did have some recommendations, we would agree with all of their recommendations. I see that we have Merrill on, on Zoom call as well, so I'm gonna turn it over to you at this point. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from Deb Keller, it's on Merrill. Hi, Deb, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Okay. Okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Good evening. Would you like me to give a brief summary of our review?
Yes, please.
Okay. Again, for the record, Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers. Greg did a good review of the project and described some of the changes that we had asked for. As stated, we did review the site focusing on the stormwater permit and stormwater design for the property. And as described, they have the three BMPs, the subsurface chamber system for the roof to control roof runoff, a rain garden, and an infiltration depression out near Country Way and the site's frontage. So as Greg stated, they do meet a peak rate and peak volume for the designated storm events. They have addressed all of my comments and just to note, they did additional soil testing as requested for, so we have test pits within the, all of the BMPs. During the second round review, some minor adjustments were made to accommodate seasonal high groundwater. And I believe the, the last couple of recommendations that I had focused on just clarification to ensure that we have the grading as intended, they do have a note to say grade the area down gradient of the proposed leaching field towards the swale proposed along the driveway. And I, I was recommending that we possibly add some more clarification for that grading to ensure that that is properly graded, since it is close to the property line. Could be spot grades, maybe some detailed grading contours to ensure that's properly graded. And then secondly, my last recommendation would be just to ensure that the driveway does, surface runoff does flow into the depression out front, is to either encourage a little bit more super elevation, pitch the driveway towards the, I'm gonna call it the left side or plan south, or create a little bit of a bermed shoulder on that, no, it's not the south, it would be the south side, apologize, or, or plan top edge of the driveway, just to ensure that all of that water, as, as intended through their design study, ends up in that depression area for drainage. And those were the two, I believe, remaining or additional comments that I had in the second review. They did, one of the things that we did discuss a little bit was trying to reduce or create more of a level spreader area with the discharge, since the low point for the property is Country Way. And they have added sort of, and regraded the swale along the driveway to help reduce flow and erosion along the driveway in that area. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, just Kim. Yeah, I would encourage the board to request that the recommendations be incorporated in the plans prior to approval, because the site, as you're gonna find out, I see a lot of the butters here, there's some issues here. We, we did get one comment, which I sent to you from Phil Dunbar, and it's Mr. Dunbar here, so I'm the, I forwarded the comment to you, but I'm gonna let them, him speak to his comment when we get to it. But I, I think that the plans should be have the microtopography along the property line to prove it drains, and it'll also be conditioned that if it's gonna be super elevated, construction is gonna have to be closely monitored, because we know contractors don't like to build the super elevated driveway.
It could be super elevated or firm.
Right, right. So whatever they choose to do, but I mean, it's gotta be closely monitored at, you know, by, it's gonna have to be monitored at binder and at subgrade and binder, at top.
So there won't be a curve, there won't be a binder, because it's a gravel drive of crushed stone driveway. But what we'll do is we'll certainly add spot grades to the plan and flow arrows depicting that will put at least a six inch super elevation on that driveway to the depression.
I will get to, I will ask my board again, we'll get to the public.
Okay. I'm somewhat familiar with that area, it means like that's by there every day. Is, that driveway is not where it is today, is it?
No.
Okay. How close is it to the next, to the neighbor above it on that?
It's a bit way through. That driveway, it's approximately ten feet on the lot land.
And will that, will water from that driveway flow toward that house?
No, how we're talking about super elevating the driveway, we're getting it toward the north constituent building.
One side is higher than the other.
And between the driveway and the property line is a swale with a crushed stone trench at the bottom of that swale.
Okay, and I, I know that we had this big discussion when it was today about the stone wall, and it was said that the stone wall was not in the same road. So you are taking a portion of that stone wall in order for that driveway to access Country Way, is that correct?
Yes.
And closing, pardon?
There's, there's nothing there. It's, it's wide open next to, is somebody here from the next door, no, he, right there?
It's not only a stone wall part of it.
Yes, yeah, and it was not, we had the big long discussion that it was not a same road. And that's where the, the rain garden is going to be, where it's.
So, so the rain garden is further up in front of the house, but what's in front right by Country Way is just a grass infiltration base.
Because right now it's a mud bed. And not that we must do stormwater, but there will be plantings because that place was where, I mean, gone top.
Agreed.
Absolutely painful.
It's, it's proposed to all be restored with a minimum of six inches of home and grass seed.
Trees, trees?
No proposed trees planted. I have to imagine that the property owner will landscape it as the project gets developed, but how the drainage calculations have been done, it's assumed to all be grass, which would give you the greatest amount of runoff. Anything further that you plant will certainly help the situation, but the numbers work with it all being. Rain garden, so, so the rain garden is further up in front of the house, but what's in front right by Countryway is just a grass infiltration base.
Because right now it's a mud puddle. And not that we must do stormwater, but there will be plantings because that place was clear, I mean, gone top.
Agreed.
Absolutely painful.
It's, it's proposed to all be restored with a minimum of six inches of home and grass seed.
Trees, trees?
No proposed trees planted. I have to imagine that the property owner will landscape it as the project gets developed. But how the drainage calculations have been done, it's assumed to all be grass, which would give you the greatest amount of runoff. Anything further that you plant will certainly help the situation, but the numbers work with it all being grass.
And also it's a stone wall. I understand, I understand, but the house that is closer to North Citri Village itself, how will the stormwater affect that house? Because it's not shown on there.
No, because the house that's currently out back has frontage all the way down the Countryway. So this lot itself, ahead of the scale of, the house that you're referring to, I believe is this house right here. There's this strip of land which goes with this house out back. This strip of land here where that current dirt driveway, mud driveway is, that would remain as a vegetated strip. Nothing happens in there. The applicant doesn't own that.
Can you, can you move the, the audience can't really see the plan a little bit, could you just?
You wanna move it?
Just to show that.
Okay. So again, in this house here, technically in their permit approvals, when this lot was created as a 50-foot frontage lot, doesn't have the ability to put a driveway down there, so this will remain.
But he uses it all the time.
I understand that that is being corrected by installation of the new driveway.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're putting, putting in a new driveway?
Correct.
But that individual in the house out back, who's, who accesses off Countryway for the demo? There's nothing to prevent him because that's his property from utilizing the dirt driveway to have a way.
The dirt driveway to Countryway currently comes onto the Crown property. Which, which does, which they have no rights to, number one. Number two, when the special permit was recorded at the Registry of Teens, there was a restriction in special term that this house is not to access Countryway through there.
It hasn't though.
And then, and then, and I believe that you're also supposed to remove that other connection too, so that they have to use the access that they're supposed to use.
Yes, because that they are using an access that is practically right on top of your house.
It was a gap structure, this, the, the dastardly, right up the axle, so.
Yeah, Amazon bands use it right now.
They live, they live on. Is anybody, is anybody?
Wait, 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 you need to stop. Okay, hold on. Let's keep moving first. Is anybody on the board?
No, I can ask the questions that have.
Once they start construction, I'm sure that'll change.
They mustn't own that piece of property law. No, we don't, yes, so that's, that's a typical.
Okay, we'll get you.
Can you, trying to understand where the level spreaders come, where did that go?
Sure. So at the end of the swale here, it's this last 10 feet approximately of the driveway. So that the swale, rather than being a direct discharge onto Countryway, the swale discharges onto the crushstone driveway. And then the driveway returns up to a sheet floor condition on the Countryway.
And another question to you, infiltration base?
Yes.
Are there circumstances with that meaningful?
So that, that does fill up during events and spills over. You have the spillway into the driveway. So yes, that does.
So in its, what, four feet deep?
Approximately three feet deep, four feet deep, sorry.
Forty-six.
Was forty-nine is the top, forty-six is the bottom?
Are you gonna put any stuff for potential storm?
Not at this point in time.
Why is today?
Yeah, on Countryway. I don't know that the storm is gonna blow up that far. It's all the most, okay, I'm just not sure it's gonna happen. Water wasn't the, the, the storm. Right, it's not. If you're looking at.
My big concern is, I understand what you're making, and getting the stormwater, et cetera, on like, this property is being developed. And there's nothing you can do about the mud puddle that's stored. That's not, we are perfect. And that is unfortunate.
It's not their problem.
I know, and it runs right into the street. You sure? No.
That would open it to the public. If you could state your name and your address, please.
I'll just try to ask. We talked about super elevating north side of the driveway. So the pitch is gonna be like, how much pitch are they gonna be?
So we're talking about pitching the driveway. The contours show that it is pitched, but I'll add additional spot shots. It's pitched this way toward the bottom of the plan. I think over the course of the driveway, maybe a six-inch pitch from the left side to the right side should go up it.
Okay. And that will, the, the high side will be graded such that the whole high side is, is at the high side of the block, basically. In other words, you're not gonna pull up and have it drop off.
No, so you, you come to the high side of the driveway and then from there to the property line, that's where the swale is.
Are you doing that all the way up?
No, you would transition it half, about halfway up this walkway, or not this walkway, this driveway, right about here, halfway up this hill is where we'll start super elevating the driveway to get it down. And the other spot that Deb Keller was mentioning is right here between the septic system and that property line, adding additional flow arrows and spot grades in here to ensure that water isn't going across the lot land, but is being pitched to the driveway, which then would be cross pitched. So that's, we already have a note to that effect, but we'll add additional spot grades to confirm that.
Now this water will go into the mud puddle. In other words?
No. But there's still volumetric flow off the property line, right? It's, it's much reduced, but there's still flow. Yeah, they don't, it's, it's less in the post-development, right, but it's, but it's still flowing. We're not directing it toward the mud puddle either.
Again, I want.
Is that an issue?
That's a typical, yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
I'm Phil Dunbar, 723 Countryway. I mean, I approach speed. So I, one of my concerns was addressed already. So this is my leaching field here and in the spring, and this has happened this year, we get maybe two inches of standing water on top of my leaching field. This to me is a much bigger problem than the mud puddle. So if that can be resolved by grading, that could be great, but if it's not, I have a much bigger problem.
How does it, how does, how does we develop, does it change it at all, or is there some?
So currently this property, a, a, a significant portion of it, I would say, goes towards your backyard. And right now, Mr. Crown has cleared that property. You are getting a lot of runoff for sure off of that. When we add the swale and add the grading between the septic system and your rear lot line, that's gonna redirect some of that water, most of that water into the driveway and into the stormwater system. But right now, there aren't stormwater controls in place.
So right now, there's a, there's a burn and the water goes right underneath the bomb, comes up at my leaching field. Okay, the other consideration is why does?
Can I stop there just a second? So you're still draining across the, there's still surface runoff from the driveway to the west, right? Across where the septic field is? It's not, it looks like the high point's 60 feet, which goes down 50 feet or something. So still draining this way.
We're still draining that way.
Right, but, but a much smaller portion of lot is doing that.
Correct.
So you have less runoff.
Correct, yeah.
The up gradient area that's going into back there is. Okay, I'm sorry.
But the other thing, why does the driveway have to be right on my property? Why can't it be in the middle of the lot?
There are no setbacks to driveways in such a, sure, when I lay out, when I lay out the driveway. I need to start with that, right, all of that. When I start by laying out a driveway to access a property, I look at several factors. I look at how it's gonna access the primary road, how it's gonna interact with the topography of the land, and we also have to take into consideration drainage. Drainage is, drainage is the primary concern at this property. And when I look at where to put a drainage system in front of this, this property, that front infiltration system has to be where it is. Not as a result of this property's proposed septic system, but as a result of it needs to be a minimum of 50 feet away from your septic system and 50 feet away from the butters' septic system. And so if I draw the radius to your septic system and the butters' septic system, it puts me at that front right corner of this lot.
And this is the butters' septic.
That's correct. And so.
This is much closer than my septic system.
This is. So, so from, from your septic system, we draw a radius of 50 feet. From this butters' septic system, we draw a radius of 50 feet. And that puts me out, out in this area, it would be with a drainage system. I didn't wanna put the drainage system against the side property line and have it close to your foundation. I know that you have an older house. I designed your septic system.
I know you did.
So I wanted to stay specifically away from that foundation as well, so I took that into consideration. And I put the driveway at that location and provided 10 feet of vegetation between driveway and property.
I don't see 10 feet, but it's my way. Those chicken bro.
Right now.
It hasn't been built yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can see if I can slide it a little bit more, but that's where it's currently proposed.
And that's because you're constrained by septic systems?
Constrained by the septic setbacks to the drainage system. So.
Yeah, if you had more room, you could sort of elongate it.
Yeah.
You make it not quite as wide, but you don't have, you don't have the one for it, unfortunately.
Not before we watch.
No, it's a fully defined.
Yes, fully before, no, it's a, it's a 50-foot front of the lot.
I'm not buying it, but.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oreo 719 Countryway, right next to Phil, I, I have the same issue with that, that leaching field. That the whole area from that driveway down to the leaching field is, there's a ton of water comes. And I think right now, right now it's clear and these thumps are still there, still acting as like a forest floor. Once you clear that out and make it long, it's gonna have a ton of water coming down that. I don't know why. Can the leaching field be moved to the, to the back of the house? Is there a reason why that has to be in that area? And I also wanna make sure that, you know, they're saying it's gonna be gravel driveway and all that. Somebody moved in there and probably three years down the road they haven't paid it, so.
Then you know what? You can call us immediately if you stop there. It'll be an issue, it'll be a issue that it can't be paid. And we need to call us immediately without further ado by the time it, it'll actually.
And they keep restricted it right in my, right?
It's, it's a requirement, right?
So.
So, so yeah, I just, I wanna know if it, it would be great if that leaching field could be moved to something back of the house or somewhere away from that because that is, it's a really bad area for the law.
We did do soil testing throughout the lot. In the soil, as you come down the hill and come down to Countryway, it becomes significantly better. You have sandy soil along Countryway and as you come down that hill, out back, you have a tighter sandy loam and a higher groundwater table on the back of this lot. So the septic is fully Title V compliant, meets all septic setbacks at that location. And it was chosen because of durability of the soil. I will, as I, as I stated and as Ms. Keller recommended, I'll certainly add some additional spot grades and some grading considerations in that area here in these.
What's the distance to the ground?
It varies throughout the site. From the septic system, it's not even four, four feet below the septic system.
And where would you have had to bend if you were in the back of the lot? Do you, did you even have?
You, you would still have to be a minimum of four feet above the groundwater, but groundwater at the back of the lot is only down two to three feet from the ground size.
That's the, could you move the septic system, leaching field, whatever, a little bit closer to driveway? In other words, have more separation between the septic system and that down load?
I can, I, I can take a look at that and consider that. There's setbacks, again, that 50-foot setback, not to the infiltration, but also to that rain garden, which I have in front of her. So I'll, I'll certainly take a look at that when I look at that reading.
You can put it on. It'll turn it somehow, so that it's less close.
If you did that, maybe add some planting there too, so that some plants couldn't absorb some water as well. Yes, sir.
Lambert 731, so what this plan misses, that it's only taking out that property. We have all of the base plate, the water runs through all these properties. I am the lowest of all these properties. We have water constantly running by lots, across the street, downhill to the fragments. It's only gonna take care of one thing.
I'm responsible for that, please.
Well, I, I guess that, you know.
But it's saying this is only a small part.
But stormwater design is, is designed, right, to look at the preconstruction flows and the post-construction flows. And unless I misremember, the post-construction flows of velocity and volume are lower than preconstruction. So this is.
It, it doesn't take into account a lot of the insulatoring water that flows around this property. And that all comes down to those flows.
I, I think the issue here, and unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do about it. It has to do with the property that has been using the mud puddles and that's the problem.
Well, that's, that's part of the problem.
That's part of it, yeah.
The main, the main part of the problem was they allowed it to clear cut that whole area.
Maybe you just didn't just.
No, I'm saying he, he did it however it happened. So that, that happened, you know. I don't think we should slap him with a, a, a positive result of doing that to say, oh, sure, that's, don't worry because I don't know if anybody has seen, have you seen, I'm, I'm 720 Countryway, if I'm with 47 years, my whole life in, in the area. And I've never seen water come down and hit that drainage, a, a, a stormwater drain like it does. And it flows south, so it hits where, where that is now and it doesn't, it can't have the capacity. So it doesn't, that drain does not take the capacity of the water and it flows right past the drain on top of it and goes to the next storm drain. And that storm drain can't take it, which is in front of your house, and it can't take it there and it continues down the street. And I'm thinking it's, it's a hazard. If I were a bicycle, now all these new laws, we're bicycle riders, supposed to be on the side of the road, or a cow that's gonna, you know, a water plane, I, I think it's an issue. I think, I think it's a, a hazard.
Correct.
And I don't think this is gonna correct.
Okay, I just have a question. So, ma'am, so we know that for Countryway, the entry place is still great. And you get a section of pocket, right, because that had more. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't work for the VPW. I mean, do they like, you know, roll a river through there, or make sure that all the pipes are open and everything's working? Do you, do you have, you know, I mean, they should, okay, they do.
It's, it's, I've never seen as much water. If it didn't take the capacity, then it's a beautiful drain. It's unbelievable. Because the amount of water that comes down that hill is like a small city.
Okay, so then my, my response that would be is that we have to contact the VPW and ask them to make sure that the storm drains are working. That, that would be, that would be one thing that we can do for you. And if anybody ever sees that happening, we're not out for a while. People want to tell us that this is happening. But I, you know, the one in Hollis Street, and I reported that, so, because I fell in that one, so that's why we.
Has, has anybody seen the water on, on Countryway? Is it made, Brad, you notice that there's?
I go back there all the time.
I go back there all the time. They're all, right down the street, we know that.
Yeah.
So, but you know, the thing is. In all deference to what is being planned here for this particular lot. The reality, I think, is not that lot, once it's developed, the problem is next door to it. That's the problem, and unfortunately. We can't do anything about it. It's unfortunate.
Well, the problem is he cleared the whole thing. He sold the piece off, and that's the problem.
I know. So.
So he doesn't, he doesn't own this van we're talking about right now?
He owns this land, but he doesn't own the other land. He sold a lot on.
That's what I said, but the one that we're talking about, the new road, whatever, going up to build another building, a five, a five bedroom house, he owns that, right? So why is it gonna be magnanimous to say, you know, hey, great, you know, screw this once, I'll click that, we're gonna take care of it, we'll, we'll, we'll give you the old rubber stamp. For the five that I don't own. I don't understand.
Because this is a stormwater curving for us. And, and so it's a little different, and there are different variations of what we prove, and Greg is here for the stormwater curving. As long as he needs. The code of the stormwater that, that we have to put, we understand that this is a problem, and we absolutely are going to state one, this is a problem, yeah.
I just don't think we should make it easy for him. He's the one that's got the problem.
We don't make things easy before we make everything. All of the concerns, right?
Maybe for.
And it's not a rubber stamp, it's, these are requirements, if you meet the requirements, everybody gets treated the same. And so, I mean, that, that's just the way it is.
Well, well, let me ask you, since we have the engineering here, so for, based on what, what we have, with, but these plans are, what we've seen historically. With a lot of piling down that hill, is that gonna be corrected and we think we're, we're gonna be in good shape?
I'm not gonna say that water issues will be corrected. What I'll tell you is they're not gonna be worse than they are today. The, the requirement that.
They're worse than the basic bylaws.
The requirement in the stormwater bylaw is that you do an analysis of the site pre-development, then post-development. And you have to match the drainage conditions post-development of what's there pre-develop.
So, so it's gonna, it's, so it's gonna be better. Can't we make it better, better than better? I know it's gonna, just all that's gonna do is cost money.
They're not required, they're not re, they're not required to, and you have to remember the stormwater bylaw only handles stormwater runoff. It does not handle groundwater.
This is, this is just runoff, this is just when it rains and it's spring, and we've had a lot of rain, it comes down, that's the only time that we have the issue. With, with that, and I'm saying it's a safety issue, that if you don't make additional corrections or say, we need more engineering or we need another study. That doesn't get corrected, I think it's a safety issue.
Well, right now, that, that's not an outpouring, that would be the other part, you know, making progress.
In the road, only, only in the road.
So, only in the road, yeah.
Because that would be a terrible. I mean, Greg has the, Greg has stamped these plans and is certifying that this is what a result and.
No, 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 he, he says it's gonna be better. He's not saying it's gonna resolve, or he's not saying it's full remediation. There's no full remediation, I don't.
No, no, so I've provided, as I've provided, the pre-development condition and the post-development. For example, in the one, for example, in the one year storm event.
And is it?
You have point four three CFS coming off the site today. Post-develop, you have point one six, so less than half. The two year event on the site today is one point oh three. Post-development is zero point three seven, so less than half. Ten year storm event, two point zero six, going down to zero point nine, that's the half. During the hundred year storm event, which is seven inches of water in twenty four hours. What comes off the site today is four point one six. What would come off post-development would be four point zero six, so less, but essentially the same in the hundred year storm. The one, the two, and the ten year events are all less than half in the post-development.
So, is that good?
Ms. Kelly.
I want to hear.
Ms. Kelly, can you contribute anything to this conversation?
So I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the question, but I'm, I heard what Greg said and I would concur with his statement, and I would add one other thing is that. When they did do the pre-development analysis, they went back and analyzed the site wooded. So before the clearing, so there is a, hopefully a level of conservatism there. With the, with the, um, condition, pre-conditions being, you know, not the lot fully cleared as we see it today. So that, that makes.
So that, that works. More, it's more conservative with that approach. Because if I did the pre-conditions as it exists today, as a clear cut lot, you're getting a lot more water in that precondition. I analyzed it as if it was entirely wooded. And I'm matching that.
So what would you say, and what would you do? What improvement is this of what you're going to be doing with, with the, uh, terms and everything else? Would you say this is an average remediation, or would you say this is a subpar remediation? What would you call it?
I would say that this complies with all of the town's situates standards.
So, yeah, but that's not my question. I, I know what's standing, is I'm saying, where does this, where does this fall on the graph of other properties that you've done, is this? Is this fifty percent, is this minimal, is this a maximum remediation?
I can't answer that because I don't know the full tributary area to your problem area. I haven't analyzed the street drainage systems. It's hard to look at just one piece. This one piece of the bigger puzzle. I can tell you it's better post-development than pre-development.
And, and, and we should, and we should say the drainage system for the road, that's the last resort. That's, that's the, that's the second wire on the aircraft carrier when the calls landed.
I mean, yes, it's.
That's, that's the last, it's, it's not the first.
Well, we can't resolve it.
No.
We can't, unfortunately.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this one, this countryway, I just had a question, Mr. Ross said that there would be a stabilized construction entrance. Because right now that lot is sandboxed, so you can't access it without coming through our property. And so I just wanted, we haven't had conversations about what that stabilized construction entrance looks like, where they'll be entering, assuming it's over our property, just like conversations.
I can't enter off of your property.
They can't, they can't come off your property.
They can't come off your property. You have to enter off of this property.
Unless they may.
Yeah, so then with the stone wall there and the huge trees, is the assumption that gets cleared and then they start construction? Or what is the order of that?
That's correct. We have a stabilized construction entrance shown on the plan, which is in the location of the proposed driveway. So we would remove that section of the stone wall and the trees, and that section of the driveway, and install the entrance at that point.
Because there's been access through our land already, like those samples that just got, we came and did our land, we took the diggers across our land, and so. We just haven't had those conversations, and it's already started now.
Mr. Ross will make sure that you can't touch that wall, and then we'll make sure that that's the construction entrance, right, Mr. Ross?
Correct.
Why, why would they go across the terrace?
We don't know what interests them.
That's, it's rim on that line, we can't access.
That driveway without there.
Yeah.
But the last. Is there a big tree in front of that stone wall? Are you gonna try to take down?
There are a couple of trees, I believe, that are on the west side of the stone wall, if I'm not mistaken.
The, the west side?
I believe they're all on the west side of the stone wall on the roads.
So is all of this, is there a sequence of construction?
There is not a sequence of construction on that, no.
They don't need it.
But there's the erosion control plant. Documenting the location of the crushed stone entrance here. That that's installed at the beginning, as well as the erosion control around the site.
Yeah, they're reconditioned, let that be constructed first. So that there's not access where it shouldn't be accessed.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I, um, I was talking about the calculation of the flows, uh, saying they're gonna be the same as they are. Does that take into account where the flows are coming out of the site?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna send attention, I, I mean, um, we should take all the public comment that we need to, and then continue it. I mean, I was gonna continue it to six thirty five next time, and are you gonna have the plans all done?
Yes.
If, any other statements from the public? Miss Bax, is there anybody online that wants to talk to us? I don't understand, does it not just turn?
There is not. No, there is not, there's not.
All right, I'll, let's set the options request to continue the block clearing with the stormwater curving. For the zero freeway until eight twenty second, twenty twenty five, and six thirty five P M. And to continue full return for action, file the return of work until May thirty twenty five. Is there a second?
On the paper?
Aye.
Okay, sorry for the delay. Uh, unfortunately, but seven forty five, it's eight thirty. We have a public meeting, it's a protective use, set through dwell in the site plan review, but ten Brookline Road. Mr. Ross is going to refuse to follow up this hearing, thank you. And who is here for ten Brookline Road? Miss Kenny, I'm under here, thank you for waiting.
Want me to read something to this?
No, it's not that. We did post a pub, we did post a public, um, meeting, I mean, but we, we posted something that is a public meeting, so you know.
Have you, have you, Mr. Kenny, hold on, thank you for where we started.
Good evening, Madam Chair, thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Let's go, love.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you, uh, for having me on via Zoom. I appreciate the consideration. Uh, finishing up my master's class at the Naval War College, and it's Thursday nights, and I know that's when you have your meetings as well, so. I appreciate the consideration. Um, I'm Patrick Kearney. I'm here to speak in support. Of the proposed accessory dwelling unit that's in front of you at ten Brookline Road. Uh, the proposed A D U will conform, uh, fully to state and local bylaws. The proposed unit size is seven hundred and twenty nine square feet, built to code and consistent with the fabric of the surrounding neighborhood. It will not be used for short-term rentals, but rather a space for extended family or long-term tenants needing affordable options in a high-cost region. Um, and I would ask that the board, uh, approve the A D U in front of you at ten Brookline Road, and I stand ready to work with. Both municipal, uh, officials like yourself and state officials to ensure the process is efficient, fair, consistent, and, um. Meets all of the local needs.
Gary? All right, so we received several comments on this project. Um, there was a comment from Joanne and Marty Lowe. That the comments were, I don't know, I don't think they're present. Um, how will the town ensure there are no short-term rentals? Will we condition that? Is there a limit as to the number of people, cars, which can be allowed for the A D U? We can't limit people, we can't limit cars.
Didn't require parking.
Right, and they, they, there is a driveway, so there is plenty of parking. Will the construction of the house, A D U, house, water flooding issues? Well. Stormwater is not in purview of the planning board on this one. They received in order conditions from the conservation commission. Uh, will there be some sort of retaining wall to ensure that stormwater doesn't drain our property without? Conservation handled stormwater. Is the gravel driveway sufficient as permissible given the proximity to water? Again, conservation. Um, and they think there's risks associated with the gravel driveway. Um, and so that's, uh, that's a comment from.
Risk.
Maintenance requirements, damage to vehicles, aesthetics, they require, um, prone to ruts and potholes, dust accumulation. And, you know, those issues. And they confirm that it would spread to their property, but that's.
The nature of the beast.
That's the nature of the beast, I mean, so, um, you know, um, we had a com, there's a comment that the, uh. From Port Health, that it's on town sewer, so there's no concern there. Conservation is issued in order conditions, water commented and sewer commented. So tho, those are the comments that were received on the project. All the comments were forwarded to the.
Is it a comment about the locations?
I think you may need to speak up, Mr. Richard, as we.
Is it a comment about locations? I thought I pronounced.
No, I think that that issue should be raised, um, you know.
I thought I saw somebody actually send.
No, no, nobody actually sent, um, that comment in, but you know, this, the stairwell for this project is basically right at the property line. There are fences, I sent you a picture of the property, um, so, um, we could see the layout of the property, the fences. To the side and to the rear of the property.
Does, does the stairway have to be there? It had to be on the other side away from the, um, fence.
With the down.
That's the other, yeah, so we'll get to that one, okay?
That's what we are doing.
That's what we're at.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. Kenny, is there, was it possible that you could put the, um, staircase on the other side of the A D U?
Um, I, I wasn't planning on putting the staircase on the other side of the A D U, um, I. Was, uh, I've spoken with all of my neighbors, uh, consideration has been given to everybody in the neighborhood. I, uh, pushed the garage back further than I would have intended, uh, so that it wasn't meeting up, the stairwell wasn't meeting up with, um. The living space of my neighbor, so, uh, the house to the right, as you're looking at ten Brookline Road. The, their living structure ends, and then the garage with the staircase goes up, so. Um, there is no overlap, uh, it is, it is on a diagonal. Any consideration for moving the staircase to the left-hand side would negatively impact the abutting neighbor to my rear. Uh, the same way it would impact the neighbor to the, to the right, so. Um, I'm not inclined to move the staircase, and I, I did give consideration to, to everyone in the neighborhood.
Mr. Kenny, you're gonna keep the little, uh, I guess, was it old garage, the bathroom, you wanna keep that there? Along with the blue doors?
But for, for now, um.
Yeah, I just wonder.
It's in, it's in really tough shape.
Yeah.
But it did, for now.
Okay, I just wonder, I, I would have no concept with that, but.
So other, it's a protected use, A D U, it meets the requirements of the bylaw and site letter approval. So the planning board, uh, really has to.
I wish that. Stairway was not right on the property line, but stairway. Doesn't they have to be something set back? No?
No, because it's, it's not covered, it's eight feet for covered spaces from, from sides.
Right, it's not, it's not covered.
All right.
Um, anybody have any questions about this? Is Alber the first?
That's our second.
Our second, excuse me, our second. Yes, would you like that? If you lost stress, okay.
Yes, you do, you have it in your folder.
Oh, well, it doesn't have, she gave it to.
Don't even smile, okay, never mind.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I, could I ask for one thing?
Go.
In looking at the site plan administrative review, uh, for the suggested motion at the bottom. Of the conditions, all of which I agree with, um, except for number thirteen, it says the certificate of occupancy for the A D U. Should not be issued prior to the certificate of occupancy for the principal dwelling. There is already a principal dwelling that is on the lot that has an occupancy permit. I've shared with, uh, the board, um, a potential, um, new construction. The timeline of that, um, based on tariffs and other things going on in the world is, is not, um. Certain, and because, because there's a, uh, current. Home on the lot that does have a certificate of occupancy, uh, the building inspector, uh, Mr. Vogel suggested that I apply. suggested that I apply for the A D U building permit separately from the uh housing um the main house, if and when that time comes. The existing structure that is there is fifteen hundred and twelve square feet. Which is uh even if it was less than fifty per- it is less than fi- the proposed A D U in front of you at seven hundred and twenty nine square feet is less than what the threshold for fifty percent of that would be at um seven hundred and fifty six square feet would be fifty percent of the current space that's there. Because this is gonna be a phased project and I I plan on living in the A D U uh while the house is going to be built and those things are expensive, I would ask the board uh for some consideration for that part of the condition.
Well, if there's an existing.
The existing principal dwelling is supposed to be raised and reconstructed and being raised.
Yeah, but the basic on existing square foot.
Now, he was basing the size of the accessory dwelling on the new, on the new one.
But it meets it meets the threshold.
It meets both.
It's both.
Yeah, the old house and new house.
Right, so why do we care about the new house? Why do we just condition it on existing vertical well?
That that that's all I was asking was to just keep that out of out of the conditions because I already have.
He said fifteen hundred and twelve square feet instead of one eighty three, right?
Yeah.
The math has to work though, right?
Mr. Kenny, what is your new, what is the new uh principal dwelling size of that? Twenty eight eighty three. Okay, I have to be realistic. And what's it run now?
Fifteen twelve.
And so in the in your remaining, what's helping, please?
Seven hundred and twenty nine square feet at the fifty percent threshold for fifteen hundred and twelve square feet for the existing dwelling would allow me an A D U up to uh seven hundred and fifty six square feet. So either way, the new house or the existing structure does comply with with the state law.
Okay, that's what the math is on my smartphone. Thank you. Just write that down. Okay? And anything else?
Are we ready?
We're ready. Let's have to do an accessory dwelling.
Speak up if you can, Kenny.
Alright, let me know. Kenny, you was in another state.
Okay, I make the, I move to make the following finding that one, on April eighteenth, twenty twenty five, take two Realty Trust apply for A D U site plan administrative review for retention of detached A D U on a property at ten Brookline Road. Two, according to the town assessor, situative records, the deed and the deed, the property tender long road is opened by take two one four three Realty Trust Matthew J Kearney trustee, an email was received from Matthew J Kearney giving permission for Patrick Kearney to apply for site plan review for the take two one four three Realty Trust. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of proposed A D U will be approximately seven hundred and twenty nine square feet. The principal dwelling will be two thousand eight hundred eighty three square feet.
Now you gotta change that.
No, that's.
Well, we don't care about it.
Oh, so we have.
I'm saying the principal dwelling is fifteen hundred and twelve.
But that's the plans he submitted. This is the plan he submitted the application. It's based on the new plan.
Yeah, but he hasn't built it yet.
But it's.
It doesn't matter.
When when I met with.
I mean, if somebody submitted plans, I'm gonna build ten thousand square foot home. You know? If it's not built. If you if you're doing accessory dwelling on existing dwelling, which is fifteen hundred and twelve feet and it meets that requirement, why do we need to care about what he submitted for a new principal dwelling?
That's what he submitted. That's what he asked for in the application.
Well, then that gives him a big problem.
Why?
Because if he has to wait for the occupancy permit for the new dwelling. I hear that.
Oh, I said, let's you tell them.
Just saying, he doesn't buy it right. He doesn't need to wait for it because it's already got.
That's what he said.
There's forms, right? But then you should break that.
Yep. We're getting here, Mr. Kenny. Hold on. We're getting here. But the application submitted is based on the new dwelling.
Karen, the the I I, when I met with you and I told you that the plan was going to be to take the house down. That that is still the intended plan, but I don't have a timeline on exactly when that's going to happen because I'm trying to build the accessory dwelling unit garage first and.
Yeah, that's not a question.
Get an occupancy permit for that. It meets the threshold for the existing or the new plan, and you told me that I did not that that the new plans were fine.
No. We we.
It's the standard.
The existing principal dwelling is fifteen hundred and twelve square feet.
Yep.
Right, so the A D U forms, the applicant has submitted plans
For?
to raise or reconstruct the the existing dwelling um at a later time, right? And that exists pet new dwelling is twenty eight hundred.
Eighty three square feet.
Eighty three square feet.
How's that sound? That sound good, Kenny? Do you do that?
Yes.
Okay, hold on. So you want to say based on the floor uh seven twenty nine, the existing principal dwelling is fifteen twelve square feet. So the A D U.
Beats the size.
Beats the size requirement.
You can add in if you want, that's where the applicant has submitted plans ultimately raised and reconstructed. Principal dwelling to a larger to to us. That will be twenty eight hundred eighty three square feet.
The altered principal dwelling will be twenty eight eighty three according to the applicant's name of the proposed principal dwelling as the existing dwelling is prepared, posed to be raised and rebuilt.
Right.
Yep. Hold on.
Alright, I'm going on to number four. The A D U.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay.
Very good. Four, the A D U will be a complete separate housekeeping unit and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. By the A D U, this is warranted to the existing single-family home.
Excuse me, I think you have to amend that to say in the future, foreseeable, right? See that too. No?
This is. It is warranted to the existing.
Okay, alright.
Six, the properties.
Say, when when, and I have to say, and few, and no future, the future.
Yeah, and future.
Except you want to keep both those numbers in the same.
Right.
Fill the chart with the same thing. That's fine.
Six, the properties and the residential are free. Someone did. Both, the proposed detached A D U structure meets all of the required setbacks, building height and ground requirements for principal dwelling. Seven, the proposed A D U will have access to two doors onto the deck. Eight, if this one private off-street parking space is provided for the A D U as the A D U is located more than a half of point five miles from a commuter rail station, carry terminal and bus station. Nine, the A D U will be serviced by town water and sewer. D P W requirements for water connections and sewer connections will be met. Ten, the applicant needs to stand into the situative zoning by law for an A D U. Eleven, pursuant to Mass General Law's Code A, section five and six. The proposed A D U will be subject to the proposed amendments to situative zoning law, zoning by law regarding A D U's notice notice of which was first published in December twenty sixth, twenty twenty four and was duly considered by the situative annual town meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. The town meeting passed the bylaw on July vote. The applicant wishing to proceed with this application, prior to final approval of the bylaw by the Attorney General's Office on the defendant by law has applied the study. I move to.
Those are the final.
I'll just.
The final is that, is there a second that's amended? Karen?
You moved it.
I'm sorry. Okay, second is amended. Hold on a minute.
Ah.
Okay, Miss Grubba.
I move to approve the site plan administrative review of an A D U at ten Brookline Avenue with the following conditions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall subsequently be performed to architectural plans by L F H drafting for the Kearney residents of ten Brookline Road, situative mass dated eight five term four consisting of fourteen plans including cover C, front and left elevation plans. A one, right and rear elevation plans, A two. First and second floor plans, A three, third floor plans, A four, house and garage studio, front elevation, A five. Garage studio, front and left elevation plans, A six. Garage studio, rear and right elevation plans, A seven. Garage studio, front left elevation plans, A eight. Foundation and building section plans at one. First and second floor frame framing plans at two. Third floor and roof framing plans at two. Garage studio, foundation and building section plans at four. Garage studio, second floor and roof framing plans at five. Conservation site plan for ten Brookline Road, situative mass, number West Engineering Company Inc., dated twelve ten twenty twenty four, provisions through one twenty eight twenty five. Two, the A D U cannot be used for a short-term rented unit. A restrictive covenant shall be recorded against the property to that effect prior to any occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling unit. The covenant shall run to the town and be enforced by the town through injunctive relief and the property owner required to pay the town's reasonable legal fees and costs for successful enforcement of any violation of a restrictive covenant. Three, no further expansion. The A D floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, the owners are not required to live in either the principal or accessory dwelling. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, the Link Department Zone Board, appeals, Department of Works, Fire Department and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the A D U. Six, the A D U shall conform to all applicable standards in the building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the D P W water division for the A D U well. Eight, the sewer connection must meet all requirements of the sewer division for the A D U. Sewer plan shall be modified prior to modified prior to a building permit found to comply with sewer division funds. None, any lighting installed shall be downwind to not shed light on a flooded property. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M or sunset generous earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes the handling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and other construction activities. No parking of any vehicles shall occur on the public way. Eleven, runoff from the proposed A D U shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, erosion and sediment sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary along with stabilization, construction and entrance. The certificate of occupancy of the A D U.
You're gonna need that.
A D U shall not be issued prior to the certificate of occupants for the principal dwelling, which already exists.
Well, second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Isn't it true that while the A D U just and the primary dwelling do not have a resident in either one of them? But the property needs both, need to be owned by one person?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, they will be. Yes, they will.
So um on number thirteen.
Yep.
Seems like we don't even need to state that. Right? Because the existing primary dwelling has an occupancy requirement.
Alright, that's what the board wants.
Then state one. You do, on the A D U's right, you could apply for an occupancy requirement. That misses.
Well, it does.
It does, I know. Accessory dwelling is supposed to be accessory to a principal dwelling. When is the principal, when is the existing principal dwelling gonna be demolished? I mean, that's the question.
So we have to.
But in either case, I'll say this this way, we've been asked whether even if they've started the new dwelling, whether they can get an occupancy for the accessory dwelling. In the in the first instance, if the accessory dwelling is done before any of that happens on the existing primary dwelling doesn't need to wait for anything, it's actually not required, right?
Right, yeah.
In the second instance, if what we're saying is he does have to wait until the primary dwelling is built. Uh and you just asked us if.
It's up to the board.
If we would waive that particular issue, and I would say I wouldn't be okay with that. Particularly if he's building, you know, rebuilding the primary dwelling and the accessory.
So.
Yes, Mark.
Well, so what you're saying, one of the different spirits going on today, so what you're saying is in a high stakes situation, he builds his A D U, gets the occupancy permit for it because the building that is going to be raised is still there.
Yes.
And you have, owned by the same person.
And that building has not.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's. But it exists itself. So then, he gets the occupancy permit for the A D U, raises the existing primary. Then what you're saying is now he has the occupancy permit for an A D U without, in fact, an inhabitable primary.
Now we've got the occupancy permit when he had.
Right, but the other, now the the house is gone. It's been raised.
Yeah, but there's nothing that, there's nothing in the bylaw. So you can't do it.
Right, right.
There's nothing, right?
That's the general.
I would I would say that that would be kind of a spersion of of what.
Well, I mean, someone could be living in their A D U while they built the house.
That's.
That's what he's planning to do, right?
Right, right.
That's what he's planning to do.
Right, so I wanna understand what's the, which then?
Well, there is a.
Well, I was just trying to remove the impediment to getting an occupancy permit for the A D U. Um.
On the principal dwelling.
On the principal dwelling if it was under, already under construction before he was ready. That's all I'm.
Oh. Probably not.
I I shared the new plans with the board because one, it's cheaper to get plans for both structures and two, for the sake transparency that that was my plan. I don't have an exact timeline on those things because as I said earlier, you know, costs of those things are changing daily and uh I would like to live in the accessory dwelling unit, you know? And then potentially uh build a new house. I just don't know. I don't have an exact timeline on that, so I would ask consideration for an occupancy permit for the A D U so that um and it it fits the specs for both situations. It fits the.
That's a good idea, okay. Now, so that's the question, can we then um put in some place here, either finding a better decision that in fact, the property dwelling is going to come down, it is going to be replaced. It's already in there, so yeah, I just.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
I agree.
I was just trying to address this one particular circumstance. The easiest way to do it, just cut it out. Just stay silent.
Take thirteen out.
If that's what the board wants.
Seems like that, or you're gonna have to rewrite it to say just basically say, I need to insert a bit of options. Yeah, I think so, yeah, we get the, you take a bit of options for the A D U. When the A D U is ready, right?
Take it out. Take it out.
Yeah, it just seems better just to cut it.
Second is amended.
But, yeah, that's, that's staying here on what?
I have number two, where it says the A D U, I I like this. Perfect. Where it says the A D U cannot be used for a short-term rental.
Yep.
Do we, is that a capitalist, cap open, cap core, like a better defined terms?
I don't know.
Or is that like per section, whatever of the Mass State Code or whatever?
It's not capitalized to the regulation. It's not capitalized in the regulations. According to your bylaw, I don't think it's capitalized, but I will look.
No, it doesn't need to be capitalized. It just, maybe it just needs to say as defined by whatever the bylaw.
Okay, so I can by law, okay. Okay.
I think that's a good.
I think that's, yeah, that's what I spoke to you about.
Um, item four. Um. The question is, do we need to say that, well?
Uh, well, we said it in twenty April FAB, so, and town council reviewed that decision, so I'm, I just repeated it here.
Bylaw does require this, so we're sort of, we're sort of just stating something that's already.
We're stating something because it's a change from what, what it what it used to be, and that they don't have to live in either one.
Right. That's what bylaw says. Given that, I guess, I'm fine with it, but it's a form of.
It will be more.
It should be over there. I mean, maybe, maybe it needs to say something like. The owner will own both.
Yes, that's.
And this, I think, the owner is getting, the owner will own both the primary and the accessory dwelling.
Although they're not required to live there. No, they're a little bit.
They're not required to live there, but they're not, they're not allowed to own the, they can't separate the the two, that's not.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not, that's not.
That's probably the more important piece to say, because the only bylaw already says you don't have to live there, right?
There is, there is legal way to subdivide the lot like that, it's just not, and I'm not going to do that.
No. So, so what do you want me to say?
So say, uh, the owner.
Is not required to live in the principal, except for, and is not, um.
And shall own.
It shall own.
Both the accessory dwelling, primary dwelling. What shall.
And she'll own both the principal and accessory dwelling and ADU.
All right.
All right.
Second amendment.
Second. All in favor?
You're done.
We're all set, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, have a wonderful, sorry to keep you late.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All set, we're moving right along in forty-five minutes, like, okay, okay. Can you, the whole principal business coming? We don't have any time, we don't have any minutes for the dwelling, you call me?
Yes, I move to approve purchase order twenty-five one hundred sixty-four in the amount of three thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and cents. For Kerry, we report someone of issues and mileage for a major site plan review and stormwater permit at seven ninety-nine through eight oh three countryway. Purchase order twenty-five one zero zero six three in the amount of seven ninety-seven fifty, a major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit at three forty in a row. And purchase order twenty-five one hundred sixty-five in the amount of one thousand four hundred sixty-two fifty for a stormwater permit pay review and report at zero countryway. On favor.
Item.
That's done.
What are we gonna need to approve, type of dates?
Yeah, what do we approve that? So I just wrote a typewriter all the time, all the time.
I was blown away the first time I put that up there.
Oh, you did it for certain things, yeah. I'd be up select man, I'd type faster than they're running. So, whatever you have, um, liaison reports, I I keep listening to our conservation, and everything has been, uh. Especially, uh, Marshall now, which is something that we got that has been, um, put up on one. Uh, moving forward. Did you liaise all of everything?
Yeah.
They're waiting for MIPA. Oh, they're waiting for MIPA, okay. Which has been filed, the ENF has been filed. Okay. It should be advertised from the monitor.
Yeah, and they have common features.
Right, so, I mean, I have a copy in the ENF, should anybody want to see it.
All right, I did traffic rules and a gentleman came in from. Whinders, the ones.
Yeah, Whinders was straight.
Straight, he's down the end on the side street. And he put together a very, very good presentation on sidewalks at Arby Way. And at. Wilshire and at. Uh, Hurst, and it's something that needs to be looked at because the way they're set up and the side distances and all the rest of it, it's an issue.
Yeah.
If your name's an issue, so the, um, traffic police took that under advisement.
I mean, you you could walk down to Cushing, but once you cross the street and cross sidewalks, it might be for a bump.
Well, you could actually, you can cross the street and take a sidewalk down to Hurst. So this is.
No, it's probably, yeah, if you go to Cushing school.
Right, it's no sidewalks.
No, there are sidewalks in here.
No, yeah. And you know, this is trouble in the way you can't see the sidewalk, ridiculous. So, and then I went to the selectmen and. I thought I went to ask, you know, they were talking about Gates Middle School, what they're gonna do with it, and. Somebody wanted the selectmen to put all of the reports that had been generated over the power of the years. Online on the website so they can read it. Yeah, we'll check, that was interesting.
I think they're someplace, right, they should, five minutes, read it, and then second.
I don't know if they're there. Huh?
I don't know if they're out there, I doubt they're out there.
But, and then, um, somebody else was concerned, why can't we put it behind the, um. Blossom green.
Yeah, it's supposed to, people say we don't want to land that, we don't, we don't.
It don't, and it's wet, and then why can't, why are we doing, so finally, I just, boom, out the door, I can walk in with that, because just to the point of, I'm. Some part, yes, yes.
No, it's all wet.
It's all wet.
It doesn't need to land that bad, but it's.
There is.
That's also buying, like.
Yes.
Yes.
Like, like, winded wing, but it is wet.
It's very wet.
But it's just.
As I said, you're going around in circles here.
Make water for skating, but you're pushing school.
You know, it's it's just, the only thing that's worth any money for that Gates old school, I don't know, bricks. Because they're ancient bricks, and those are worth a lot of money, so there you go.
You're just gonna go, go, go outside.
Right, all time those bricks.
We have ones that fall down and.
I'm like, I'm already against us, we know who you are, those are my first bricks.
But other than that, I mean, it was just.
Yeah.
More of the same, and, um, some, one of the select people said that the land improvement did a really good job of hooking. Um, worker, you know, knocking my house up, blossom green, and yes, it was the only one that that had come forward with.
Whatever, in their.
What our age, so it's just.
Why else, those people just don't want to let that little piece of property go.
And then, of course, they brought a traffic and, which it has nothing to do with it right now, it's. It's it's a forty, uh. Friendly forty B as blossom green was.
What we drive a group, right, because what we all said. Hopefully, I watched it today. Yeah, we must have, uh, an elevator. Uh, we remain swamped. That that's, I have at least four decisions to get ready for the twenty-second. Before the twenty-second.
This month?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you had a nice time watching for rest after the.
And that wasn't a rest.
No.
It's not a vacation. It's a trip.
It was like. So we're very busy. I want to indicate this with my motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?